Not yet.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. This is the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Dexter Township. And we will start with Pledge of Allegiance. Stand.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. I see Clerk Stambul Ellis is just walking up, so we'll start over here with the roll call and conflict of interest check. So Karen Nolte.
Here.
Lonnie Scott.
Here.
Mary Smets.
Here.
Laura Sanders.
Here.
Gretchen Driscoll.
Here.
Myself, Karen Sickenga, present. Michelle will be here in a moment. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with any items on the agenda?
The only thing I have is I forgot my glasses in my office.
Do you want to run and get your glasses?
If you don't mind, I will.
So we're going to pause for a minute while Treasurer Metz runs and gets her glasses and Clerk Stambul Ellis gets settled for just a moment.
I need to take care of my coat.
You didn't have any conflicts of interest. Right. So Clerk Stambul Ellis is present as of 6:00. Okay. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Treasurer Metz, seconded by Sanders.
By who?
Sanders. Motion by Metz, seconded by Sanders. Okay. And first item on the agenda is the call for public comment on agenda items. Any members of the public wish to...
We didn't vote on the agenda.
Oh, okay. That's... All those in favor approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now, first item on the agenda is a call for public comment on the agenda items. Any member of the public present who wants to speak on any of the agenda items today?
Press the button on top.
I will. It is green light time. Sure we're good? All right, cool. I would try. Brad Metz, 9-800-TOMRO. I did see that on the agenda, the park pass is going to be discussed again. Lots of options out there for different ways to get park passes to everyone. At the end of the day, I personally don't feel that getting the park passes to everyone is really happening. There just doesn't seem to be a way to get it to everyone in an equitable way. Because if somebody is paying taxes in the township, yet they don't have a homestead or they don't have a home, they're still paying into this fund that's then going back to buying all the park passes. So it seems just a little bit that, you know, some people are getting the park pass while others aren't. And we do have Hudson Mills right around the corner that the township does fund. Thank you.
Great. Any other members of the public?
Martin Muley, 11-546-NLACRO. Yeah, I hate to be redundant, but the park pass thing, I pay taxes to the parks. And now I'm paying passes, I'm paying taxes, and you're going to maybe give me a... I don't want a park pass. And if you give me a park pass, what, you're getting them for $26, $27? I can go there and get one for $29. There's no... So use my tax dollars differently than for the metro parks. I already paid taxes to the metro parks. That's just a fact. So I don't need to pay taxes to the metro parks twice. Thank you.
Any other members of the public want to speak?
I just wanted to make the distinction that just because our taxes pay for the park doesn't...
Address. Yeah. State your name and address for the record.
Alicia Abbott, 10833-NOR, Territorial Road, Dexter Township. Just because we pay property taxes, and some of that money does go to the metro parks, doesn't, isn't the same as people being able to go and use. And it's not, nobody thinks that it's a freebie. But you are, in a sense, you know, investing in the people, the residents here. That going to the park is good for your mental health, it's good for your physical health. And if we have a surplus and can do something for the residents that benefits them this way, I think that we should do that.
Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Okay. Then hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay, so that was moved by Scott, seconded by Driscoll. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Then hearing none, that was unanimously approved. Discussion items, first up, Raina. Come on up. This is a discussion of the fiscal year '24 annual audit.
Thank you. Nice to see everyone this evening. Again, my name is Raina Emmens, I'm a partner with PSLZ. Pleased to present to you tonight my Dexter Township's annual audit and financial statements for year ended March 31st, 2024. I was just going to jump into some highlights, and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address anything tonight. The township did receive the highest level of audit opinion possible, which is an unmodified opinion, so nothing bad to report to you tonight. No disclaimings, exceptions, nothing like that. In other words, a clean audit opinion for the town, which is exactly what we want.
Raina, can I just interrupt you because I see Lonnie flipping through his packet? I think we should be clear that we don't have the audit report in front of us right now.
Correct. You don't have that in your packet. I did send the PDF to Michelle like just within the hour. You probably haven't seen it yet. So if you want to distribute that to the board. And tomorrow morning I'll have the... I did deliver the audit. It was the wrong year and the audit was back. Just to be clear. I won't give it out correctly.
So I went around and collected them right before the...
But it's all good. Just so you know, the property taxes up this year about 7%. Which, of course, we all saw our property taxes go up at least 5% because of the inflation rates. But 7% is very good for the township. That means that people added on, you know, had good improvements to their property and/or, you know, things became on cap. So getting greater than a 5%, you know, 7% is a solid. That, of course, the township did not raise their mortgage rate. That's all taxable value increase. So we'd like to see that. State shared revenue shows a drop this year over the prior year, but the prior year you received the one-time extra for the, they finally caught up with the census adjustment in fiscal year '23, so fiscal year '24 kind of evened out. And next year, the state is projecting it to be flat again this year. And that, of course, depends on the sales and income taxes they collect during the year, so it could be better than that. But that's just what they're projecting right now. The story here really is interest income. It hands off to Treasurer Metz for nice job with the investments. We, it was a significant increase, think three to four times the prior year's amount that you earned on your money this year. So that didn't happen by accident, that's us taking advantage of great rates, but also keeping it very safe. You're not in any crazy investments, you are within your investment policy, you are in sound, approved investments for the township. The capital outlay this year was about $400,000 worth, just in the general fund. That was mostly road improvements and the property purchase is within this audit as well. You also spent the rest of the American Rescue Plan money, mostly on road improvements as well. That was about $650,000 just in that. So we made a nice debt this year on the road improvements. Ultimately, you added to the general fund fund balance $120,000, ending general fund fund balance at 4.4 million. Police fund stayed pretty stable, consistent with the prior year, you added to the fund balance about the same amount. Fire fund came in, almost break even, about $13,000 added to it. And then finally, we like to talk about the pension plan a little bit. The prior year, fiscal year '23, you had a net investment loss, that's because of how we value the investments on December 31st each year. Well, 12/31/22, not a good day in the stock market, so you actually get like a $130,000 net investment loss the prior year. This year, we're reporting net investment gain of $115,000. So we've almost made all that back up, and of course, we've had a strong year this year as well, we're almost at 12/31/24. So we're optimistic and hopeful we end the year well this year in the stock market. Net pension liability actually came down. You went from about $79,000 last year, and you're down to $43,800 this year. So we, again, it's something we really like to see. That takes you to 96.1% funded on the pension plan, which is excellent. So with that, I know that was a lot of numbers. If there's any questions, and of course, after you've read through it, if you need to come back at another meeting, I am happy to.
Well, I don't, without having it in front of me, it's hard to ask questions, but that all sounded good and consistent with what I thought.
And in total, your general fund expenditures came in under budget.
Yeah.
You didn't, you know, you did a nice job with, on a monthly basis, you kept track of, you know, monitoring the budget to the actuals, you know. And thank you to the Parks Department for doing an excellent job and providing us with all the information. The audit itself went pretty seamlessly, and we appreciate all the cooperation and basically everything we needed. Everyone was very accountable, and so thank you.
Yeah, and we completed the audit really early this year, so thank you guys. I mean, we were done with the fiscal year quickly and did the audit, I think, in June. So, yeah, June or July.
It's been so long ago.
Yeah, yeah. It does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Raina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I put in an item, the next item on the agenda is just budget planning, and I put this in here because we're going to have a transition in leadership coming up on November 20th. And it happens that the best practice recommended by the MTA for delivery of the budget to the board is December 1st. So that means the only way to get the budget delivered to the board by December 1st is for me to deliver the budget, so I'm planning to deliver just a draft of the budget on November 19th, which can then be either taken up by the next supervisor or set aside by the next supervisor. And as you guys know, because you're familiar with this now, there are several schedules that result in line items in the budget, and these I've detailed here. So that's the planning and zoning fee schedule, which we typically approve in December. We do pay ranges, and you can see that I have blanks in here from when I was, on page 39, you see a couple of blanks under pay ranges. I actually went and looked that up after I delivered the package and saw that actually we didn't make a, we didn't make a decision about that. Last year, it wasn't embedded in the motion or in the salary range decision. But we talked about not redoing that benchmark study every year and just escalating the compensation, the pay ranges by an inflationary factor every year, for a couple of years, and then maybe every three or four years or something, we could redo the benchmark. And since we did a benchmark study last year, I'm just planning to come to you with the inflationary increase that I got from Chris Raina, our assessor, for the pay ranges. That's not the pay, so that's, this isn't setting the compensation for our incumbent staff, this is just setting the pay ranges. And then the capital costs, if you remember, we approved a capital study last year. Excluded from the capital study was road repair because after next, next year is the last year for road repair to be a capital cost. Subsequent years, it's going to be a maintenance cost, and it'll get folded into the operating budget. So road repair was excluded from the capital reserve study. So the capital cost contribution will be the amount recommended by the capital reserve study plus the cost of the road repair for next year. Okay? What we have not had in the past, but what I'm putting forward this year is an IT schedule. So this is a schedule of hardware and software costs, a hardware replacement schedule. So we discovered, you know, I have discovered, and Sam is working with me on that, that we've had some very old computers, we've got a very old firewall, and that's the reason the internet goes down pretty regularly at the township and other issues. So we're working with our new IT company to come up with a recommended schedule, and then that will be a cost driver. So we're assessing the age of everything that we have and putting it in average cost. So it'll be very similar to the capital reserve study, but just for our technology and then software as well. And I do know, and these guys know, that we're going to be asking for a pretty significant increase in software costs because BSNA is migrating from a server-based system to a cloud-based system, and they're going to, at some point, they're going to stop supporting the server-based system, and so at some point, we're going to have to go to BSNA. So that'll be embedded in this budget request, will be a request for a non-incremental increase in software costs. And then going along with that hardware and software schedule, we're also going to be putting forward like a tech use, some kind of tech use policy for you guys' approval. So that'll be like, you know, I know it includes, like, don't expect privacy is one of them. Everybody needs to understand the Open Meetings Act and FOIA and all that. So when we extend software, when we extend the use of our hardware and our email and that, everybody knows what that means. So I just want to let you guys all know that this is coming next month. And is there anything that you want to ask for, any questions that you have about that?
I just have a question about the technology. Does it also include, I know we've talked about it at previous meetings and at the MTA, the transfer of the township from a .org to .gov website?
Yeah, that's happening right, they're actually working on that right now. And I don't think there's much cost to that, and I, what they're talking about doing, and we're not the only ones that are doing this, so it seems like it's, they kind of have it down to a system. But I think the idea is that your .org email, there'll be redundancy for a period of time, so your .gov email and your .org email will both work for a transition period, and then we'll migrate over to the .gov. And the cost is really just, you know, the cost for Vector to help us with it and oversee it. But I think we're going to try to do that before the end of the fiscal year, so it won't be part of the fiscal '26 budget.
Thank you.
Are we looking to upgrade our email system at all? That's my question.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by email, but we do want to have the most updated, but we want to have the most up-to-date Microsoft licenses. Yeah.
Okay. I hate our email. Things just disappear. Or it's got a bad search or something.
I agree with that.
It's terrible, no search.
We don't, we don't, yeah.
Microsoft Outlook is just not my preference, but it's really hard to see attachments. Once you start a, once you start a chain, you know, or there's like a multiple responses and replies, like, I feel like I have to do, to have to work to try to find my attachments. Yeah, it's...
Yeah.
But I, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at a different system. When I was at the university, the university switched from Microsoft to Google.
Yeah.
We could look at that, but it is kind of...
I like Google.
But it is kind of a big, that would be a lot bigger switch than going from .org to .gov, but it's certainly something I won't be overseeing. But the future supervisor could, or, you know, future treasurer or whatever, could oversee a transition like that, for sure. But that's not part of this schedule, this is just a cost. This is, all this is, is a use policy and then a schedule of cost, so that we know what the annual costs are and we know that we're keeping our equipment in good usable condition.
Yeah. So is this utilizing a new server as well as new equipment? And I ask that because I know, especially for trustees that may do work outside of Dexter Township, would they have access to a computer that is Dexter Township, that is attached with our server at Dexter Township?
Well, what we have right now, what we're doing right now is just inventorying the equipment that we have and identifying its age, and then identifying a replacement date based on the best practice for replacement dates for computers. It doesn't involve recommending the addition of any new equipment, but we could, I mean, that's another thing that we could potentially do, is add a laptop that can be checked out.
I'm just saying hypothetically, it would be smart if, you know, to make sure things were secured, a Dexter Township server versus on an outside server, and...
Yeah.
I've learned a thing or two when it comes to malware, is that a word? My techie kid.
Yes.
And if, I mean, if information isn't protected in Dexter Township server and someone's working outside, that could be a scary situation.
Yeah, I know Vector is not recommending that we go to a cloud-based system. So like, when I work from home, I use a, you probably know what it is, but I, you go to a, you're logging directly into the server here and you're looking at your...
VPN.
Yeah, VPN, yeah. Yeah, so it's a VPN that is considered higher, more high security. But it isn't really about the equipment, it's about the VPN and logging in with a VPN.
You can have, you could have both, though. You could have redundant security to have an actual issued by the township with, it would be software, so there's software that would be on that unit.
Embedded in the unit.
That is different, that may be, to Michelle's point, that, for example, the organization that I used to work with, we were remote, but we would get the computers in first, put on the software that were the things for like malware detection, to be able to clean it, and that way our tech person, if Laura lived in Lansing and was working on her computer and had a tech issue, our tech guy in Grand Rapids could still remotely wipe that device, find stuff on that device. So there are security elements with owning the devices as well as being an external VPN to access the records.
And that was my exact question. I have a laptop, of course, Dexter Township, I can take it with me. I don't work from home. I'm here doing township work, but I would just assume that that laptop, if I was working on it, it would have those protections embedded in it. So any outside, if it's the cemeteries, if it's the newsletter, if it's open space, if anyone's working outside, all that information is protected under a Dexter Township server. That's, I was hoping that that would be in this technology.
Upgrade?
Yeah. I'm not sure I can pull that off by next one, but I would try.
Well, just in the future would be...
Yeah, I mean, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good goal, but it's more than I was planning to do for next one, for the next meeting, but I can try. I'm not very high-tech myself, so...
Not either.
Any other questions on that, comments? Okay, then hearing none, then our next agenda item is the Metro Parks Pass program. So basically, this is coming to the board now because we approved it as part of the annual budget process. It is an execution of a strategic planning goal. So to me, the overarching policy decision of providing access to parks, to a park, we already made that policy decision, but whenever we spend more than $5,000, we have to come to the board and get permission to release the funds. So it's coming to us now. I'm bringing it to the board now for permission to release the funds, not necessar, I don't, I don't feel like we should necessarily remake the whole decision about the Parks Pass program. I feel like we already made a decision about the Parks Pass program with a lot of public input, including on the strategic plan and then later on the budget process. But, but there is a matter which, that we have, that I don't think we have been totally clear on, a policy matter that wasn't made as part of the budget process, and this is basically who is eligible for the Park Pass. And that's something that we talked about a little bit last month. So last year, last year's eligibility was one pass per home, but the other options that we've talked about are one pass per homestead, which is a homestead as a primary residence, or a couple other things that were discussed were one pass per property or one pass per property owner. And so since the last board meeting in September, I've spent a lot of time with Chris, our assessor, and Sam Edwards, who's our office manager, but also our assistant assessor, to try to understand the implications of the one pass per property owner and the one pass per property options. And basically, in a nutshell, I would say, it's, Chris is basically saying, if we go with either of those, the one pass per property owner or the one pass per property, we're going to end up distributing, both distributing park passes, park passes to non-people, because some property owners aren't people. And then, and then we're also going to distribute multiple property, multiple passes to the same person, because a number of people own multiple properties, like Karen Nolte, for example, owns her house, and then a lot across the street. Chris's feeling was that that wasn't necessarily equitable, because some people merge their property, that's not necessarily a reflection of how much taxes they pay, and some people own very large tracts of land, other people might own the same amount of land, but it might be spread over five separate parcels. And so the parcel is not really, it's not really a metric of people. So he, Chris was recommending basically that we stick with the two options that I put under other options, which is either the one pass per homestead or the one pass per home options. So that, I mean, that's kind of it in a nutshell, but we have to decide. And again, we did one pass per home last year, some people own multiple homes, but I think this board felt like we wanted to be more inclusive rather than less inclusive. And sometimes, some, somebody might be renting, might own a home that they live in, and then they may have a renter, and they might get then one pass for each home, and then that renter would have a pass and access to a park. So that was, I think, the board's thinking last year when we set it as one pass per home. So I'm looking for two things, one is permission to expend this money, and the other is a decision about which of these, who we want to be eligible for the pass.
Is there a way that a renter who isn't necessarily given one by their owner, by the owner of the home, is there a way a renter can get a park pass?
I mean, there's, they can get it from their...
I mean, through us.
They... I mean, that's, I don't know how we would do that.
They have to, because it has to be applied when we check, when we verify.
Yeah.
It comes up as the property name, and last year, when somebody issued, requested, and the name didn't match the property ownership, we called them and found out they were renters, and then they filtered back to the owner of the property to request the tag, and then the owner of the property gave them the tag. The renter did not get it themselves. And it was the renter's responsibility to ask the owner to file for the pass.
We don't have very many renters, so...
There wasn't a lot of that issue.
And I would say, this was a real feel-good program, I think. I mean, we got lots of, I meant to copy the comments from the survey that we did about, but so we could hear kind of the positive comments that people submitted about the Park Pass program, but we didn't hear any complaints from renters that their landlords refused to give them a pass, so we feel, our impression is that landlords just gave the pass to the renters. That's the impression that we have, but we didn't have any... the renters, that's the impression that we have, but we didn't have any way to validate it.
I'll make a motion for a discussion that we do the same program that we did last year, which is the one pass per home, by the cost of $79,157.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
So that was motion by Driscoll, one second.
Distributing. Can I get it in what, who? Park passes, how is that happening?
Okay. So what's going to happen, the, the plan is. At the November meeting, and the Park Passes. People that had already bought Park passes. Because they already had their Park Pass. This year, we want to get the notice out before. Do is send a postcard. Printed newsletter, this year we want to send. After tomorrow, so everybody gets it in hand by November 1st. Form, where people go in and they fill out the. And then, and we want to have an end date. So we're going to send a postcard, then. During the tax bill that says, hey, don't forget to. A direct mail and then a reminder, and I know that the sometimes want. Day saying, when is it happening, when is it happening? End of December 15th, and then. Compares a BSNA spreadsheet, you know, we can pull from BSNA, put it into Excel, we'll have an Excel form, submittal, we can do a macro that, that, that double checks them and then pulls out anything that doesn't validate, so we should be able to do that like in a.
In a couple days.
In a day or some, you know, then with, Sam has set it up to, we've got everything kind of queued up and ready to go, so if the board approves, and then it'll go to a mailhouse, because I don't want us, because if we take the Park Passes, if we hold the Park Passes ourselves, then it, it triggers cash handling requirements and things like that, so. So the idea is we validate the, the number of applicants, we go to the metro parks, we get the correct number of passes, maybe a few extra for, for things lost in the mail, then the mailing list and the passes go to a mailhouse, the mailhouse validates the addresses, so we don't mail any to incorrect addresses, and they go in the mail. And then, and then we'll see if we get, we had a few, like three or four people complain that, that they had gotten lost in the mail. So it should be much more invisible than it was last year.
And how, who are they contacting?
It's a, it's an Excel, it's a, it's a Microsoft form.
It'll be like, it'll be like a survey on the website.
Yeah, it's like a QR code or.
So they have to, okay, so they have to go to our website physically, so they're going to get their notice, and then that notice is going to prompt them to go to the website to select it, to fill this form out to request it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's much like our surveys, it'll just auto-populate, though.
And the owner of the form is Sam, Sam Edwards.
Ah.
And, and, but they can, I mean, there's, they, we, we have, I should have brought the, the postcard that she designed, because it also has her phone number on, you know, I mean, if people want to call her, they can call, call her, but we're hoping to drive everybody to the form.
That was going to be my question, though, there will be an option for those who may not have internet access for the ability to, to do a form like that.
Yeah.
Last year, I think we had four people that.
Couldn't.
Quite frankly, they were the elderly people that stopped by and couldn't get it, and I, I know Alicia happened to walk one neighbor through it for them, and so, yeah, you're always going to have those couple exceptions, but I think we only had four last year, so, so it wasn't bad.
We had thirteen, we distributed 1,350 passes, which is more than half of the eligible, which I was surprised by, because we did it on such a short timeline, so this year, I think, it'll be much higher.
Yeah, and in our timeline, why we're, we're narrowing it down to basically six weeks to act for six weeks, we had done over 80% in November and December last year, and that January, February, March was, actually, I think it was less than 20%, it was 150 extra tickets we had, the extra passes we had to buy.
So we'll have to queue you guys up to, to get a check, you know, because, because I don't want to buy the passes in advance, I want to validate the number, issue the check, and then go to the park and get the, get the passes, so we'll, we'll want to do a part, a check run, we'll want to cut a check as soon as we validated the addresses.
Yeah, if this goes through, it will be a check.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so I definitely do my research before anything like this occurs. So my question is, has anyone reached out to other municipalities, let's say, the city of Brighton or Brighton Township where they have parks? Do they actually pay for a Park Pass on their taxes? I don't even know if treasurer and mess would know this. And if they do, is it similar to, like us with the WWRA, how people see there's a done operating cost that we pay for on the taxes? That, that's, that's my big question, I mean, be, because those are my two issues. I'm the first person that would say, mental health, physical health, environment, I'm a 100% fan of all, but I definitely want to be transparent to the community as well, because when I see the WWRA on my tax bill, I have that choice to, you know, I can, I can utilize that service, that amenity or not, but I know I'm paying for it. And, and it's pretty much just been brought to light that this is tax dollars that are paying for it, probably within the last four months, three months or so, it's really came to light, because people were actually just genuinely excited about it, and, and I know they are, a lot of the community, but I, this is a tax dollar paid.
Well, everything, everything we do is.
It's not a kindness of Dexter Township, so that's my question, is, would this make us comparable to other areas that actually fund a park, that they have a park in their community, where they pay taxes for something like this?
I mean, most, most places do, they have metro parks there, yeah.
Like Kensington Park or, or what have you, is that, that's my question.
Well, when a municipality has a park, I mean, I, I have a lot of parks as clients, I mean, a municipality has a park, they, they collect their general fund dollars and they typically provide more services, I mean, Ann Arbor provides a lot of services, I mean, trash collection and parks, parks department and all that, and those are all general fund, funded departments, so when you're paying your property tax in the city of Ann Arbor, they have a parks department, but it's not broken out on the tax bill. It's just, it's just something that the city council, when they approve the budget, the, the expense of the parks department is part of, of the general fund, but there are also millages that are separate for part, like, like the metro parks is an independent park.
The county.
It's, 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 it's not an entity of the county, it's, it's very unique, there are only a very few metro parks in the whole country, there's like four, five metro park systems in the country, and it's just a, it's just a separate entity of government, kind of like a school district or, or, you know, a township or whatever, it's an entity apart, and, and that does show up separately on the, on the tax bill, you know, it's not, it's not an entity of the county, I don't think.
You're correct, so, but now, I mean, it is, everything is categorized under that one millennial line or county, that's it. They used to break it all down, so you could see it, but now they've condensed it to one line.
But the metro park is a metro park.
The metro park is in there too.
Oh, it's in there.
Mm-hmm. All county taxes, so they do, that's, that's considered part of county tax, that goes to county, and then it gets distributed out, but we are, but yeah, we are paying towards that, you know, all of us, you know, in Dexter Township and whoever, in Washtenaw County period, we're paying for.
The, the main reason I ask is because if we do something like this, I genuinely, genuinely believe it should be a sustainable thing that's done year after year. So if I see that on my tax bill, or I know I'm paying for it, then I just, I just assume I'm going to receive that in the mail, I, that's my question.
So I just want to say again, I know, I, I feel like we already made the policy decision to do the parks, parks, and for me, if we, if, if you're talking about rescinding that policy decision, that, that, if, if that's the question, I, I would feel very uncomfortable doing that, because I feel like we've already promised the residents we're going to do this, and we did that through the, through the budget approval, where we funded all of our annual expenses using a very public process, and previously, we had a strategic plan that, that identified providing park services as a, as a priority. We reaffirmed that priority in the strategic planning session. So I, I really wanted, what I want to talk about is not, should we do it, which I think is a good question for next year, but for this year, we already decided to do it, and I think we should just go ahead and follow through on a decision that we already made.
I mean, I'm not ashamed to say that I, I helped to make that decision, but I wasn't informed well enough, I don't feel like that when I made that decision, so I feel like I'm okay with saying at this point, I've changed my mind because of these circumstances, you know what I mean? Like, I, I've looked into things a little bit more, it was also sold to us that we don't fund a park, and then when I brought this up during the special or the closed meeting, you know, it was, that's the whole situation, is that we do indeed fund a park, so then that made me change my mind, and I feel like sometimes, you know, we, we make decisions, but they're not always the right decisions, and it's okay to go back on them, and that's just how I feel, and I mean, and I'm not speaking obviously for everybody else, but I'm speaking for myself, and when I say, yeah, I was part of saying yes during budget time, but I didn't have the information that I do now, so that's just how I feel about it, thanks.
I just, I, I just want to make sure that we are very clear with folks that are, are listening to the discussion too, that Dex, this is, this would be Dexter Township funding their residents' access to that park. When you're saying we fund a park, we as county taxpayers fund the county to fund a county parks system. That is, to me, and I know that that's, I, I think the point was raised last meeting, and I want to be very clear to folks, if we think that, that people didn't know that this was a tax-funded thing, like, I, I think we should be very clear about that, to make sure that everyone knows, but I, I do think we have to, we have to have that distinction. Dexter Township currently does not fund a park. All taxpayers in Washtenaw County fund a county ta, a county park system.
Right.
So I, I'm not saying that I disagree, Maris, with your, your point, I just think that that's an important distinction, that we are not paying for a park already.
Township.
The township, or just township residents, the entire county is paying a, a county parks system.
Yeah, right.
Because there are, I, I should, so, I was the chair of the, of the Township Park Commission in Ypsilanti Township, so along with county parks, there are lots of municipalities that also operate their own parks and recreations department, and so the, the discussion of this being cheaper, I can tell you, I mean, Ypsilanti Township is a much larger township, but the cost to maintain a parks department, parks staff by the land, to, to operate an individual park, I think was the discussion that we had about whether or not the township was operating their own park.
Right.
So I think that's just an important distinction.
Right, and that's it, and that's, that was reflect, in our discussions with the metro park staff, they echoed that, I mean, it is so much more cost-effective, I mean, $80,000, we could never run a park, any kind of park, I mean, I ran the Botanical Gardens and Arboretum for, for 13 years, and our annual budget was millions of dollars, that we, we, to purchase the land, to hire the staff, to, to, to maintain a park would be very expensive, so we set a strategic planning goal of providing access to parks, we talked about, there was even discussion, I don't know if people remember, about land purchases, where there's vacant land that would be suitable for a park, I know Webster Township has talked about making a park around their, their town hall, all of that is complex and expensive, much more so than, than, than $80,000.
But do we need that? I mean, do we need a park here? I mean, we have so much land that's actually free, I mean, we go, you know.
Well, we may not, but it's in our strategic, it's a, it's a strategic planning goal that we have. We, we, so the next board, which is going to take office on November 20th, might say, we don't need this, we don't want this to be a priority, we don't want to do this, but this board set that as a goal three, three and a half years ago, we reaffirmed it as a goal with a very big public process a year and a half ago, when we looked back at all of our strategic planning goals, we removed a few from the list, because we had discovered that they weren't feasible and were desirable, we did not remove the park goal, and so we're, we're, we're following, we're, we're following a process, a very public process, and I think it's fine, if people don't, don't want to vote for it now and you've changed your mind, that's fine, but I'm just, I'm, I'm in a process of executing policy decisions that the board has made, so.
To Clerk Stambul Ellis's point around transparency, could we send out a, a notice in the tax bill that explains this, like some of this conversation, that, you know, like some kind of explanation, so that the public, I do think it's confusing, and so that the public understands, you know, how we ma, how we came to this, what the, what, what the point is, how the tax, you know, where the tax dollars are coming from, and it's, and 79,000 is the maximum, right?
Yes, it probably won't cost.
It's probably what, maybe half, last time, half?
Yes.
Okay, half or more, right, and that, there's some kind of just like explanation to everyone, I, I, I could see a paragraph being really helpful.
Do we need to explain everything that we funded in the budget then?
No.
Because we also funded the warning sirens, we funded the fire alarms, the dry hydrants.
No, but this is, no, the, the, the reason we would do this is because it's, it's somewhat controversial and hard to understand and confusing, and people have noted their displeasure with it or concern, so that's why we would do it.
I, thank you, Trustee Sanders, yeah, I, I, I went through all of this over and over as well, I mean, the majority of everything we've, we've done has really revolved around public safety, which is a core function of our governance here, sitting on this panel. That would make me feel a lot better if, if something, a blurb went out stating, you know, this is compensated through your tax dollars, we hope you enjoy the park, I mean, I, I think that does need to be transparent.
Yeah, we could put that in the tax bill reminder.
This is something that may not be sustainable, I mean, just, you know, I mean, just to, to be honest with our taxpayers.
I also think to that point that, because it sounds like this, you know, for the next board to decide, to discuss it, we'll be coming fairly quickly as well as a part of the next budget, that it would be good to put that information out and even say that, you know, the decision about this for future years will be discussed as a part of the next budget process, and, and let them know what that process is.
And have your voice heard?
Yeah, so that the future board can.
Yeah, because people have expectations, you know, and that, that could be hard on the next board, you know, and then they look like, oh, well, you know, you guys aren't supporting this, and this board did, and, I don't know, I just, I, I guess I just, in our area where we are, if we were in a city, we are very close to Dexter City, they have plenty of parks, we have a ton of space that we can use out here, but, you know, I don't know, I just don't, I don't see.
So should we take a vote on it, or?
Well, first, I have just two comments, we do have a lot of natural, you know, stately in, but it's not accessible for, like, it's not for kids on, little kids on bikes and handicap folks, and the metro parks actually have accessibility for, you know, everybody, so personally, I'm really interested in trying to help our, our community, our neighbors have accessibility, because I, I moved here because of the beautiful hiking trails, but they're certainly not, I can't, my grandkid can't bike, you know, so. So that's one thing, and, yeah, and it's an issue, I, I was from, in a city where sidewalks were everywhere, and, you know, we could bike around the block, and I can't do that where I live, so it's important, I think, to have that ability, and the other thing, I know there's some questions about sustainability, I really think this is a policy issue about whether or not we want to help people be able to afford to enter the metro parks, and in my mind, I think the auditor just reported that we have a $4 million fund balance, so $79,000 of an annual cost is, to me, affordable, so I think this, I agree with you. $79,000 of an annual cost is, to me, affordable. So I think this, I agree with you supervisor, that this is really a policy issue, not a financial decision. I support, obviously, transparency at all, always. And I, I do think this is maybe just a little bit of a disagreement about policy.
Yeah.
But I definitely support making this, you know, the metro parks accessible for all of our citizens. And we've gotten really good feedback from a lot of the community members. They really appreciate that we're doing that. So that's mine.
Can we just?
Oh, go ahead, Laura, a few more.
I was just going to ask if we could amend the motion to say that we would approve it with a agreement to inform the public with a, a, a paragraph or whatever that goes out in the tax bill, you know, with that caveat.
Oh, I, I just have a couple of things to say. A, it is funded through the county metro parks, is part of that. But what Dexter Township is doing is giving their residents access to that park. Just because it's funded, not everybody can go. And not everybody can buy the pass, or is willing to buy the pass. So we're giving them accessibility to the park. I totally agree with Gretchen that. Where we live, there's plenty of places, you can't ride a bike, you can't do those things. And Metro Park's big focus, they're, one of their guidelines right now is to make everything ADA compliant, which I think is extremely important. And the other thing I think we should keep in mind, while this is a hot topic right now, last year we ran this problem, this program, we gave away 1,350 passes. We didn't give them away. We issued 1,350 passes. We had exactly one complaint. It's less than a tenth of a percent.
So I think everybody's made their positions clear, and I'm going to suggest that we vote. And everybody should vote your conscience, conscience.
Well, can we amend the motion to say that we're going to include, I mean?
I'll take that as a friendly amendment. It's fine.
A friendly amendment? Great.
And I see, so a friendly amendment to, to?
And who's the second?
I'll second.
Karen was the second. And the friendly amendment is to include a pair?
Add that to the motion.
It's last year, we put out one that said that we were doing this in lieu of having a parks department.
But I want, I wanted her to restate the friendly amendment for the, yeah, yeah. So I, so.
So the, the motion would be to approve the purchase of up to, to, one pass per home, up to 2,968 homes, at a cost of, up to $79,150,000, with notice going, with additionally, with notice going in our tax bill explaining the process.
I'll second.
Okay. So I'm going to do a voice vote. I'll start with Michelle Stambul Ellis.
Yes.
Gretchen Driscoll?
Yes.
Laura Sanders?
Yes.
Maris Metz?
No.
Lonnie Scott?
Yes.
Karen Nolte?
Yes.
Myself, Karen Sickenga, yes. So, motion passes, six to one. Thank you, everybody. Okay, next up, Board of Trustees, civic preparedness. This is a request to amend our bylaws to add a civic preparedness requirement. Michelle, would you like to speak to this?
Um, so, let's see, okay, so, this was important to me when we did our bylaws a few months ago, maybe close to a year ago now. I felt what was lacking was a document for elected officials with an emphasis on newly elected officials to have resources when they take these positions, and/or, or when they run for these positions, and/or need continuing education. So I had a conversation with both our supervisor and our treasurer. Just, and Samantha Edwards helped with this as well, just to incorporate into our bylaws assistance.
Training requirements.
Training requirements. I mean, this is, this more or less feels like it's mandatory. I really just felt like, I've lived this job now, you know, running for this, this position. It took a lot of training that I really didn't have, or even know where to navigate these resources when I took office. And there was a whole lot to learn. And I wish I would have had a document like this, just educating and giving me ideas of, of where to find these resources and assistance.
And can I just add, so what we're proposing to add is on the top of page 54, highlighted in yellow, and I did have a chance to just run it past Sarah, gave us our attorneys here. She suggested that four lines down, we add the words "or similar organization." So, or, I'm sorry, three, three lines down, so, so that, and after, after, it says Michigan Township Association. So each first-term member of the Board of Trustees shall complete at least one introductory class on the duties and functions of a township, and township trustees offered through the Michigan Township Association or similar organization, to give us a little bit more flexibility. So for example, the, the Citizen Planner course, which I think is excellent, is offered through MSU Extension. So we didn't mean it to be as restrictive as that.
I would like to make a motion to pass this, uh, what are we calling it? I'm sorry.
Civic Preparedness.
Civic Preparedness. Training be a part of our bylaws.
Second. So moved by Sanders, seconded by Metz.
So discussion.
Any discussion?
Oh, sorry. I think it's a good idea. I mean, we all came in blind. Well, most of us came in blind, and why not help the next people that come in? I mean, it makes sense.
We also had a pandemic, so there wasn't as much training available.
And we have training funds, too.
Yeah.
And we have training funds.
Yeah, it's allocated.
I think it's really a good idea.
I will say, though, I mean, everybody do their research, you know, and new elected officials do your research, because some of them were very, very helpful for me, and some of them were not helpful whatsoever.
That's true.
Because I, I found that, a lot of it, I don't know, I, I, I would be interested to know if there is actual real training, because the MTA training that I did was basically, they just read me the Treasurer's Handbook that I had gotten like, two weeks prior to taking office, which was not helpful whatsoever.
Because you had already read it.
Does not teach me how to set up a tax rule, it doesn't teach me how to collect taxes and disperse them. That's the kind of training that these people need. They don't need MTA training. I'm sorry, MTA is great, but the training is very lackluster.
Yeah.
Just to say the least.
So I think.
It can choose. Other organizations is good. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, nothing is going to, you know, be better than experience and just doing it. But, yeah. BSNA training, I will definitely highly recommend that. They're amazing.
BSNA training, Bureau of Elections should be in here, Washtenaw County Treasurer, Washtenaw County Clerks, yeah.
Well, we could just change, we could take out, offer through, offer through Michigan Township Association or similar organization, and, and say, through a reputable, professional.
I think the MML has better tra, some more, I, their, their training and their resources seem to be better quality, too, I think.
So do you want to change the language here and remove MTA?
I mean, you don't have to remove them, but, I mean, it's just an option. I'm just trying to tell everybody a heads up, like, don't waste your time, or tax dollars on that training. That's all I'm saying.
They won't be using this livestream.
Find yourself a veteran clerk, find yourself a veteran treasurer, find yourself a veteran supervisor, and be their best friend. Basically, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I was, I was just also going to say, thank you, Michelle, for bringing it up. I think this is a great idea.
Just to have it in there, that, you know what?
Do we need a list of recommendations? Like, should we build a list of?
It's, it's in the form. I remember, we were just going to make it a, you know, she, like, Sam, Sam did that research, but, but we're going to put it some, she's got it, and it's available.
Good idea.
But it's a good start.
Yeah, it is.
Good job.
So are you going to say other professional organizations, after the Michigan Township?
Well, we're saying "or similar organization." Yeah.
I highly recommend the Michigan State training for everybody.
Yeah, then, the Citizen Planner is.
It's phenomenal. It's real good.
Yeah. Okay, so, I think we can just, we don't need a voice vote. So let's just say all those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none. Then, next up is approve the annual liability and workers' compensation insurance plan. I made this an action item instead of a consent agenda item, because it, it's just a financial, because it's $32,000, you know, whatever it is, 30, $30,422,000. So I, I didn't think, I mean, this is, again, something that was approved as part of the budget. It's the same insurance provider that we, that the township has been using for many, many years, 24 years, they said. And so, I, I just wanted to note that, because we could, if we wish, thanks, Sarah, take it out to bid, you know, at some future year. But there is an advantage to having stability in your, in your insurance provider. And they provide insurance for a lot of our sister organizations. And they've been, and they're great to work with. And we budgeted it at $32,000, and it's going to be 30,422, so we don't need a, a budget amendment. So can I get a motion?
So moved?
Is it 27, or 30?
It's, it's 27, 767 for the non-workers comp, and then there's a separate workers' comp of 2,644. So the total cost is 30,422.
Is the motion on? This is 27, 767.
Oops. Thank you.
Page 72 outlines the whole.
I think that it's, that the, that that is the correct payment to the statutory agency, though, because I think it's a separate, but we might as well make it for the full amount, just in case it's.
Oh, provided through the accident fund?
Yeah, I think, I think we don't have a bill from the accident fund. And when the accident bill comes, fund bill comes, it will be less than $5,000, so it won't have to come to the board.
Well, the actual invoice is for 27, 7, which is probably right. It's just confusing. So you want?
So I need two things. One is approval to pay the invoice, which is 27, 677, and then approve.
So somebody move that, right?
And then approve.
I'll support that.
And then approval to, to sign all the forms, the application forms. So it was moved by Matt, seconded by, by Driscoll, and the motion is as written. So we'll do a voice vote, because it's $30,000. So Solani Scott?
Yes.
Maris Metz?
Yes.
Gretchen Driscoll?
Yes.
Michelle Stambul Ellis?
Yes.
Laura Sanders?
Yes.
Karen Nolte?
Yes.
Myself, Karen Sickenga, yes. Okay. Next up, another Michelle item.
Okay. Our wonderful voting booths. Yes. If anyone would like to go and take a look at our, the voting booths that I'm requesting, we found these in Inclusion Solutions. They are pretty fantastic. Our current voting booths are all singular, and they are falling apart, where the legs don't want to hold up the, the voting booths any longer. So we went ahead, looked these up online, they come highly, highly, they're highly rated. They're, they're very patriotic, very election looking. They're easily compliant, which is wonderful, four people can vote at a time. I would love the permission to be able to increase the election budget, to be able to purchase these, three for precinct one, three for precinct three, and four for precinct two.
And execute the transaction.
And execute the transaction.
You can get them by election?
Yes.
So moved?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so let's say moved by Scott, and seconded by?
Lonnie, please. Or, I'm sorry, Karen.
By, by Nolte, seconded by Nolte. Any discussion? Okay, so.
Do they fold up flat for storage?
They fold up flat, and like an accordion, they're, they're amazing. So less space. There's also.
They fit in a little suitcase.
Oh, in a little suitcase?
And they wheel.
I was going to say, do they come with a box or something?
No, they wheel.
They come with a box with directions on it.
Michelle, do you have the privacy curtain, too, that go?
So we're not doing the privacy curtain, those aren't highly recommended, but these little guys are. So it'll give a little extra, and that's, I don't, oh, page 76. It gives a little extra privacy for each individual. And anywhere where we can draw ADA compliance, I think is, is wonderful.
Yeah, me too.
Does it, it looks like from the picture, Michelle, can, can just one of the sections come down?
So one of them, one of them is down, at all times. So there'll be a chair, or we can move that chair, and someone can come up anyway with a chair.
Great.
And it, it will give much more room on a very small space. Having precinct one and precinct three in here, it's, it's, it is pretty tight, especially when we have to line voting booths on both sides, and it gets a little uncomfortable for voters, too, where.
I love them. I think they're awesome.
I think they're wonderful, and I just really appreciate being able to bring these to the voters.
Any other questions, or I will take a vote? Okay, I'm going to do a voice vote. So Michelle Stambul Ellis?
Yes.
Maris Metz?
Yes.
Gretchen Driscoll?
Yes.
Lonnie Scott?
Yes.
Laura Sanders?
Yes.
Karen Nolte?
Yes.
Myself, Karen Sickenga, yes, so.
Thank you.
Great. Last action item is, is just the acceptance of the financial transactions. This was the six-month mark, so I did a forecast on our year-end balances. I did make a mistake. I pulled, I pulled the wrong number. So under the fire fund, I, I have just the wrong beginning balance. It's, I understated the beginning balance by, by about $60,000, because I pulled from the wrong cell. So I can send an updated chart to everybody. So can I get a motion to accept the, the, to approve the check dispersal report, which paywall expenses?
Someone.
Moved by Driscoll?
Second.
Seconded by Metz. Any discussion?
You seconded it?
I did.
Yeah. No discussion? Then all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, great. Any comments on any of the committee reports? Metrics, or anything? If not, I'll move to the second.
Lonnie, yes, I'll go ahead.
I just have one quick thing. I actually got an email today from Verizon, that they are also looking into options of co-locating at this point, because they've struggled to find adequate property. I emailed back and asked if that meant that the property owners that they were meeting with, that I included in my report, that that didn't work out, but I haven't heard back yet. But they did, they identified a property, they made contact with the owners, they let me know that there were ongoing discussions. And so I'm looking forward to hearing back, if that is a possibility. But then today's news with it, was that they're also looking at some co-locating options to still address the, the cell issues that we're having. And I, I just also want to say, as a part of my report, the, the DAFD portion of that, if I, we were, as, as DAFD members, we were able to ask the chief to send along the daily updates for the, the task force that was deployed to North Carolina to help with Hurricane Helene cleanup. Dexter Area Fire Department had two folks, Lieutenant Root and firefighter, I think it was Andrews, were deployed, getting those updates, the photos, the information. They did such an incredible amount of work, and I know I said it in the report, but I hope that any of you that have the opportunity to let those folks know that we're thankful for their work. It was absolutely, they were in the worst-hit area. They were, several days, they spent in Chimney Rock, and some of the areas that you were seeing all over the news. And just an incredible amount of work in the week that they were deployed there.
I talked to the chief about it today, because he was in here testing the fire alarms, and, and he said it's just very intense, and very, a lot of destruction there. Okay, so, we'll get a, you know, although, there, there's part of the agenda where we can go ask each board member if you have any additional comments. But right now, we'll go to the second call for public comment. So anybody want to talk about anything that wasn't on the agenda tonight?
It still is. Never really get a chance to say stuff like this in a, in a public forum. But in two days, it's my wife's birthday.
Oh.
Happy birthday, sweetie. Happy birthday, sweetie.
Happy birthday.
She didn't look too happy.
Yeah, she does not look happy at that public comment.
You're sleeping outside tonight.
Anybody else have any birthdays they want to share?
This isn't Chi Chi's, all right? It's time to go home.
Okay, all right, then, any board members have anything that, any concerns or questions from board members? Michelle?
Nope.
Gretchen? Laura?
Nope.
Cleanup day. Week from Saturday, the twenty-sixth.
I'm, I'm bringing the hats.
Okay, you bring the hats. I don't have to agree to wear the hat, but we have about twenty-two volunteers and we'll get some breakfast snacks and pizza is normal.
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth, Saturday from, yeah. If everybody'd show up by eight-thirty, so we can get cars in place to block traffic where we don't want them and traffic where we do want them.
Janice, anything?
Okay, I have a couple items. First, we have scheduled a volunteer appreciation event on the, on our, on our community calendar for the year. It's scheduled for December. I can't remember the date, but, you know, everybody knows, I think I'm a big fan of volunteer appreciation because I had so many volunteers at the Urban Gardens. But we won't be here, or it won't be this board that oversees that event. So, but, but if we do do a volunteer appreciation event, we need to plan it now. We need to, you know, we need to start inviting people and, and planning it. So I wanted to ask you guys, do we go ahead and plan that volunteer appreciation event? And we've got about a hundred volunteers. And I, I include, even though our committee, board and committee members are, technically get a little bit of, of compensation for their work, I still think of you guys as volunteers also that are deserving of appreciation. And so I want to know, do we move forward with planning it or, or not? I want guidance from the board.
A hundred volunteers is really impressive, actually, when you think about it. I, that's a lot.
I think volunteers make your community strong, so I think we should, we should definitely do something.
All right, so we'll just go ahead.
If that, you know, if that, if you need help, whatever.
I mean, I'm, we'll go ahead and plan it and I will update you guys on it. And we're just committing the next board to it, so. Those of you in the audience who may be on the next board, you're going to have to follow through on what I plan next few weeks. Ha, ha, ha.
All right, sounds like a big party.
Yes.
Okay.
I won't be there, so.
It was a good party.
Second thing, a couple other things, I'm, you know, I'm a planner. You guys probably figured this out. So I, I am trying to set things up for success for the next board. And part of that is the budget. And part of it is I'm trying to leave a to-do list for, and these are like policy matters or operational matters that we have begun but not finished. And it's just meant to be a to-do list. And I'm passing this out to you guys because I want to include it in the packet next month. And I want everybody to pay, to review it and add to it anything that's missing. And it'll be something that we're leaving for the next board. And the other thing is, I do also want to include in the budget document that four-year report, which is basically a status report of the strategic plan and what we've accomplished. And I know that there are things that are left off, like I know, like, like some of the automation things that you did in the Treasurer's Office and the, and the investment reports and, you know. So I know that that is an incomplete report. And so I would ask everybody to pay attention to that, read it carefully, and let me know within, probably, if you could get back to me within a week with any additions or edits to that four-year report, because I would like it to be comprehensive. And that'll be part of the budget report. Okay? Anything else? And if not, I think we have concluded our business.
Thank you.
Adjourned?
Adjourned.